Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to say hello to everybody here in Lubbock, Texas, USA. I'm getting some smiles from the audience because nobody's used to seeing my face on a consistent basis. But City Council will hold an executive session today for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding personnel matters under Section 551.0074 of the Texas Government Code. We will recess to executive session. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to welcome you to City Council meeting today being the 24th, I believe, of October 2023. We're calling this meeting to order to begin. If you would join me in standing as we are offered prayer by Pastor Solomon Fields of the St. John Baptist Church here in Lubbock, following which Councilman Steve Massengill will lead us in the pledge of the flags. Pastor?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, this beautiful day, this day of cool breezes and colorful leaves and so many blessings you have showered upon us that we really do not deserve. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve. Thank you, Lord, for those that are city councilmen and those who are part of the city staff and the city government. We pray now that you would just bless them, that you would have, that they would have wisdom and knowledge for the decisions that they make, and we pray that you would lead them in a sense of righteousness and biblical justice. Lord, I know that you can give us what we need. I know that you are an all-sufficient God, so we thank you in advance because we know that every good gift and every perfect gift comes from above. Please remember those that are in foreign lands, those who are held against their will, those who are fighting battles, those who are dying on the battlefield. Remember them and comfort their families and friends. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity just to minister to this council. Pray, oh God, that you would just bestow upon them whatever they need in the inner man and in the outer man, so that they can bring your will to pass, so that they can be a blessing to your people, so that they can serve this city we call Lubbock, Texas. We thank you for all your many blessings, and we ask these prayers in the precious majesty of Jesus Christ. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may all be seated. Thank you, Pastor Fields, for being with us today. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call City Council meeting to order, and the first item that we'll address on our agenda, I believe, is our minutes from our previous meeting, those being all the -- I'm going to go on past. We're going to move on down the road on this. I do apologize. I missed that. We're going to take up our citizens' comments for today. We have one, two, three, four individuals who have signed up this afternoon, and so I'll go ahead and call the first one, Mr. Joshua Schenkel. If you guys would come, when you're coming, give your full name and your address, please. You'll be given three minutes. At two and a half minutes with 30 seconds remaining, you'll hear a bell. I promise you, somebody else over there is doing that. It is not I. And so for you to begin wrapping up your comments. Thank you. Mr. Schenkel.
Good afternoon, Council. Joshua Schenkel, 2604 47th Street. I'm so pleased to be in front of you today to speak in favor of Item 6.5 on your agenda to consider creation of a committee to look at amortization and downzoning. I will spare you from going through all the motions of this. You've already heard our arguments on this matter. We would have a couple of recommendations for this council. One is that if you so choose to form a committee to look at this, we think that you should give this a broader mandate than you've stated in your agenda right now. This advocacy over the time that we've done it has been kind of compressed into amortization, and then there was this kind of last-minute round that was sort of haphazard at looking at some other remedies that had been brought forward before but then kind of smushed together. And all of that is to really say that there are probably a broad scope of remedies that would come into question when we're talking about resolving how industrial zoning has negatively impacted our community and how we might, over time, work our way out of it. And amortization is just the most extreme remedy that a city can take. I would remind everybody that Senate Bill 929 that deals with this doesn't actually prohibit amortization. It just balances a city's desire to do it against, you know, different options that a property owner might take, and it does make it so that a city would want to have to really have a good argument and want to do it. And there are cases where that might be the case, and that's the only thing that's ever been advocated for here in the creation of a policy like this, is that we outline how we might resolve this over time, and that might include a lot of different remedies. Also, there's low-hanging fruit here to begin to resolve this problem right now, and some of that has already been contemplated, like some different comprehensive rezoning things that might allow us to take some steps immediately. Also, there are a number of funding mechanisms out there which have been contemplated, like getting our city more deeply involved in the federal government's brownfields program. There are other EPA programs. Right now, organizations like my own are undertaking air quality studies that we would be happy to have the city partner with, but there are other ways that the city could step up its own sort of observation of this issue and enforcement mechanisms. The other thing that I would recommend to this council is, of course, that were you to create a board like this, that some members of it should rightly be people who have been advocating on this issue for quite some time, and I know that this council has a lot of people to select from who have stood before you and advocated on this issue. So once again, I would commend you, and thank you for your consideration. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Schenkel. Next, we have Ms. Dora Cortez here to speak with us. If you would, Ms. Cortez, come forth, give us your full name, address, and begin at that time, having your words.
Good afternoon. My name is Dora Cortez. I live at 217 North Avenue O, and I represent North and East Lubbock Coalition. I am here to speak on Resolution 6.5, which I was very happy to see on the agenda, on today's agenda. I would like to say that anyone who you decide to put on this committee should be an individual who is a champion and a voice for North and East Lubbock, who will defend, support, and promote the interests of North and East Lubbock. Secondly, North and East Lubbock Coalition and our attorney, myself, and Natalie Ayers, Natalie Miller, would be more than happy at any time to have a sit-down with any member of this council, any board, any agency. We have suggestions and we have recommendations that we would be glad to share with anyone who would be willing to sit down with us and listen to what we have to say because we have been doing this for a long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. Next, we have Ms. Paulina Madrid. If you'll come forth, give us your name, address, please.
Yes, hi. My name's Paulina Madrid, and I live at 1704 77th Street.
Ms. Madrid, if you'll bring that mic up to you. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Paulina Madrid, and I live at 1704 77th Street. And today I'm here because initially I was told that the name to my business was not appropriate, so I've completely rebranded and changed the name. And so I would really appreciate if you guys would consider 6.4 today, that you would give me a vote in my favor for the separation variance. We've also removed the late hours. We've removed the name completely from the door and from the sign, and that's everything. And if you can see in the pictures, we also have some letters that I had given in the school in 2021, letting them know what our plans were there, and they were specifically given to the principal of Mrs. of Hodges Elementary. So if you guys need to see those, but that's everything. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Not at this time, Ms. Madrid. Since it's citizen comments, we're not allowed to actually have conversation or pose questions. Thank you, though. Okay. And lastly, we have Rick Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, if you'll come forth and follow the same protocol, name and address, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. My name's Rick Rodriguez. Address is 2522 Kent Street, Lubbock, Texas, 79415. I serve as the Chief Operations Officer for the Lubbock Independent School District. First of all, council members, I just want to take a minute, a personal privilege, and just thank you guys for your service for this great city and working through the challenging discussions that you have on behalf of the citizens of this great city. I'm here representing the district in its opposition of Agenda Item 6.4, which is a request for variance from the applicable 300-foot minimum distance provision listed in the city's ordinance number 2009-00060. Once again, we are here addressing the council, as we have in the past, for the same facility address. However, now it's under a different name. The largest of our concerns remains the same, and our position has not changed. We believe that the previous councils had valid concerns when they created this ordinance to establish a safe boundary for children, parents, and staff of schools. It is our strong belief that by adding the complexity of serving alcohol at a location so close to a school is a recipe for disaster, a disaster that you can eliminate by not granting the variance that's requested. In previous meetings, the requesters indicated that she reached out to the principal in regards to her request. This is simply not true. While communication was sent, there was no request for a meeting or discussion by the applicant, nor has she reached out to the district as of today. Also, there may be a perception that the previous name of the establishment, Tipsy's Taco Shack, was the major concern of the district. I want to clarify, the district's major concern is the selling of alcohol in an establishment that falls within the 300-foot ordinance. And while the name of the establishment for us, because we didn't understand, and I've now learned, it was troubling, it was not the main reason for the district's opposition for the variance request. We've provided today for you a folder with a few documents for your consideration as you prepare to make your vote known, and those documents include a letter from Dr. Kathy Rollo, Superintendent of Lubbock ISD, letters from teachers and parents of Hodges Elementary, which is the school that's impacted by this request, as well as a letter from a program that serves Hodges Elementary, the YWCA. Previous letters already provided to the council the last time that the variance was requested, and an overhead image of the location. We have school principal, Ms. Alice Jimenez, that's here today, who has served in the role of principal of Hodges Elementary since 2018. Lubbock ISD Board of Trustee, Pastor Bill Stubblefield, who represents this district, had intended on being here but has to deal with some funeral arrangements for a recent family member that passed. So I want to thank you for your time and consideration in support of denying the request of the variance and the ordinance that protects our staff, students, and our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I do believe that concludes all of our citizens' comments. Am I correct? We're good. Now I'm going to take up where I left off before. I think I'm going to be calling for, calling for approval with regard to the minutes for previous meetings, August 23rd of this year, Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, and September the 26th of 2023 regular city council meeting. We have a motion by Councilwoman Martinez Garcia and a second by Councilman Massengill. Are there, is there any discussion about the meetings, any corrections that need to be made? If none, I'll go ahead with the vote. All of those who in favor of approving the minutes, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. They approve. The council will now take up the consent agenda. The consent agenda is Items 1 through 1.4, I'm sorry, 5.1 through 5.24. However, we are looking to separate one of the items. I believe that's Item 5.8. Since no other items were pulled, I would entertain a motion for us to give consideration to Items 5.1 through Item 5.4, 5.24, with the exception of 5.8. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer and Ms. Councilwoman Martinez Garcia. All of those in favor of Items 5.1 through 5.24, with the exception of 5.8, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. It passes. All righty, I'm going to go ahead and call for us to take a look at Item 5.8, which is a resolution. Is, oh, we haven't, Mr. Atkinson, are you going to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly can do that, or you can take a motion and move forward on the item. Your pleasure.
How about let's go ahead and I'll take a motion for approval of this item, and we'll just go ahead and move forward based on what I've seen from the dice. Is there a motion to approve Item Number 5.8? Thank you, Dr. Wilson, for your motion. Mr. McBrayer, for your second. All of those in favor, please vote by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. All righty. That moves us on down to regular agenda. And I hope this doesn't get too tricky for me, but we're going to handle this. The first item on the regular agenda is 6.1, and it is in relation to our board appointments. And I'm going to call on Mr. McBrayer, if he would, to make a motion and indicate those recommendations for those board appointments, and we'll take it all at the end in one single vote. Mr. McBrayer.
(Inaudible). I move that we accept the following.
Mr. McBrayer, if you do me a favor and punch there. You go.
I can hear myself just fine.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Mayor, pro tem, I want to move that we accept these following persons for appointment to the various commissions and boards of the city, as I name them off. For the airport board, we are wanting to reappoint Nancy Neal, and we are recommending the appointment of Jim Gomez for another position on that board. For the Animal Services Advisory Board, we are recommending the appointment of Zelda Cuevas to that board. She's replacing Raymond Krager. For the Citizens Traffic Commission, we are recommending Phyllis Gant Gambles for that board to replace Carlos Morales, who is no longer going to be serving. For Health Education Facilities Department Corporation, we're recommending the reappointment of Roxanna Lopez. For Lubbock Emergency Communications District Board of Managers, we're recommending the reappointment of Robert Kynast. For the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance Board of Directors, we're recommending the reappointment of Sunny Garza and of James Conright, and then we're recommending to replace Mr. Dr. Operman, Dr. Lori Rice Spearman. The Market Lubbock Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors, we're recommending the reappointment of Sunny Garza and James Conright and Henry Patel. And then we are also recommending to replace Dr. John Operman, Dr. Lori Rice Spearman. For the Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board, we're recommending the reappointments of Gary Ferguson, James Jordan, and Glenn Davis, and then we're recommending the appointment of Dr. David Small to replace Alexander Dickie. For the Museum and Art Standing Subcommittee, we're recommending the reappointment of Joanna Stravlo, and we're also recommending the appointment of Dory Bosniak to replace Danielle East, who's going off that board. For the Permit, License, and Appeal Board, we're recommending Jillian Nava to replace Jerry Moorhead, going off that board, and we're recommending Tom Nichols to replace Patrick Kelly, going off that board. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, we're recommending the reappointments of Terry Morris and Renee Gage, and then we are recommending the appointment of Edwin Scott Gloina to replace Aviraj Patel, who's going off that board.
Thank you.
One final, sorry, one more page. The Veterans Advisory Committee, we're recommending Scott Anderson to that board to replace Kerry Sima. Thank you.
Would you do that? Yeah, that's what that is.
EUB is that, yeah.
I'm going to tell you, Mr. McBrayer, that that last Electric Utilities Board is a separate item, and I think you were just warming up your chops to get it done. But I would like for us to.
(Inaudible).
Thank you very much, Mr. Massengill. You knew what I was saying. So now we have a motion by Mr. Mc, motions by Mr. McBrayer and a second by Mr. Massengill to accept all of the names that were listed for reappointment and for initial appointment on the different boards. And I'll ask for the vote. All of those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. McBrayer, I'm going to call for you again. If you would, let me see, let me make sure this is, make sure you would get those names out again for the Electric Utility Board, for their appointment, please, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
For the appointment on that board?
For the, Madam Mayor, pro tem, I move that we make the following reappointments and appointments to the Electric Utility Board for reappointment, Dan Wilson, Louis Harville, Edwin Butch Davis, Edwin Schultz, and Pastor Solomon Fields. We also recommend for appointment to replace Patrick Gambles, who's going off, Dr. Craig Rhine.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer, for that motion. If someone offers a second for that. Thank you, Ms. Councilwoman Martinez Garcia. Having a motion and a second, I'll call for the vote. All of those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. All righty, we're down to, is it going to be you, Mr. Blue?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty then. I was going to call you double B, but I guess I don't have to. Go ahead.
Not today.
If you'll take this on, please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, pro tem, and council. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Item 6.3 is a resolution to accept the PID petition from Beaton Bow for the creation of Cypress Ranch PID, and also finding that the petition meets all the requirements under the local government code, Chapter 372, for the creation of PIDs. It will also call for a public hearing and the creation resolution. So council, as a little bit of an overview, the proposed Cypress Ranch PID is just shy of 100 acres, generally located just south of the Levelland Highway, Highway 114, the train tracks to the south, and in between, Inlar and Alcove. So the construction is going to be approximately 563 single-family residences. They will be constructing a park and basin drainage infrastructure. Mayor, council, if this passes today, we'll give appropriate notice and call the public hearing for your November 14th, and at that same meeting, we will have our creation resolution. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Blue? Ms. Joy?
Couple of questions. I understand that the developer is actually doing $500,000 of improvements at his expense. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have representative here if you want to ask them any questions.
Welcome back.
Hello. My name is Wes Everett. I work for Beaton Bow Homes. Some of y'all that don't know me. Yes, ma'am. We are putting in the improvements at our own cost. Everything will be, this is for, the PID creation is to help to maintain that for the future of the community.
Does that include the drainage issues that you have out there?
Yes, ma'am. After the drainage analysis, working with engineering with the city of Lubbock, we have drainage basins on the west, I mean, the east side of our property to be able to handle that area.
Okay. So the PID assessments will simply be for taking care of, maintaining, that sort of thing?
Yes.
Or if they want to add an additional amenity, that can also be covered by the assessment.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Are there any other questions? If not, I'll accept a motion for approval for Item 6.3. Moved by Dr. Wilson, second by Mr. McBrayer. Thank you. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Item Number 6.3, resolution from Biz Development, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, and it passes 6-0. All righty, the next item, Item 6.4, there she is. Go ahead, and I'll call for you to go ahead and have, begin, tell us and remind us about this item. I believe it's been before us before.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Item 6.4 is a resolution to request an alcohol variance to the required separation between a business with a TAVC license and a school. This is for Quince's Taco Shack. As you know, this request was previously considered by council under the former name Tipsy's Taco Shack. It is within 300 feet of Hodges Elementary, measured property line to property line. As a reminder, that 300-foot measurement is property line to property line for schools and daycares, door-to-door, while traveling along the legal pedestrian path for churches and hospitals. Based on some of the questions that were discussed last time, I did a little bit of research to give you more information about the other businesses that are within 300 feet of the school that also have a TAVC license. In 1973, council required a 300-foot separation, measured front door to front door while traveling along the legal pedestrian path for all four of those uses, schools, daycares, churches, and hospitals. In July of 2009, council approved an ordinance to change that measurement to be the 300-foot from property line to property line for schools and daycares. Pub 50, located in Suite B of the same multi-tenant center, it's a bar. It has been there, it has been a bar since 1982. Originally Buckhorn Saloon, changed to Pub 50 in January of 2009. They hold a mixed beverage license, same as what's being requested today. La Cumbia in Suite C of the same building, there is Sports Grill. It was originally a bar in 2006, became a Sports Grill in 2007, also hold a mixed beverage license. CC Sports Grill, 1605 50th, within the same multi-tenant center, has been there since 1997 with a mixed beverage license. And in the property to the south, the Coco Club, that's a bar nightclub, been there since 1972, also with a mixed beverage license. So in an aerial view, this is what that looks like. The green circle, 5001 Suite A, is Quince's Taco Shack, the one in front of you today. To the east of them, 1605, is CC Sports Grill, and then 5001B is Pub 50, and then the one at the far southwest corner, 5001, is La Cumbia. So the entrances to Pub 50 and La Cumbia, this is taken from Avenue Q, looking northeast towards the building. And then on 50th Street, looking south at the building, you can see CC. And then on 50th Street, looking south at the building, you can see CC's Sports Grill and the Kinsay's Taco Shack. So CC's is actually closer to the school. If you're coming from the school, you would cross in front of CC's on your way to Kinsay's. This is just a zoomed-out aerial. Again, you have the multi-tenant center here where the request is being made, Hodges Elementary, and the other building to the south, the Coco Club. Now, just to see what that measurement would be, had it been front door to front door while traveling along a legal pedestrian path, as the other businesses were? If you start at the front door, you have to come out to the public right-of-way, cross at the corner, where it's legal to cross, not jaywalking across Avenue P, come down into the front door of the school. So you're about 668 feet. The applicant is here. She already spoke to you. If you have any additional questions, would you please answer any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Sager. What I wanna do is go ahead and get a motion in front of us, if we will, please. Alright, I believe a motion from Dr. Wilson to approve item 6.4, and a second from Ms. Martinez Garcia. And I think you... Ms. Garcia, you wanted to have a comment or ask questions? I just saw your mic hit.
I do have a comment first before, but I do have a motion as well, or a second, that is. Can I do that?
Repeat.
No, I don't wanna amend the motion. I wanna... Just do the second, if you want.
Yeah, I believe that's what I have down, that you made the second. You have a motion and a second. But you didn't have a comment?
Well, my comment is... Rick, do you have a minute to come up? You mentioned that the name of the restaurant wasn't an issue, but it was an issue. I recall this... This is the fifth time, I think, Ms. Madrid has brought this issue to the city. I've probably experienced three of those visits. And during her first visit, it was an issue of the name of the building, or of her business. She has remedied that. And I understand there's still an issue with no conversation. But do you know what other... Do you know the hours of Kinsay's Restaurant?
No, ma'am.
Do you know the hours of Pub 50?
No, ma'am.
Do you know the hours of CC's or Coco, the Coco Club?
No, I don't have any really reason, my personal reason, to not have the knowledge of that from the district's perspective. It's my understanding, and I don't know this to be accurate, so forgive me if I'm incorrect, but Leveaux's establishments do not operate during our school hours.
What time does the school close, Hodges? What time do... What are the hours of Hodges Elementary? Sorry, I don't have a child in elementary anymore, so...
If you will, come forward and give us your name again.
Alex Jimenez. I'm the principal at Hodges Elementary. And school hours are for Lubbock High School elementary schools are 7:40 to 3:25. But Hodges does have an after-school club, which I have mentioned before, that releases at 4:30, but sometimes some of our staff members stay, just in case we have students that are still there until about 5:00.
That being said, because I understand, and you know, I know we've tried from the diocese to really work on this and be balanced and fair, and I think that's very important, but... And maybe I'm just speaking for myself, but as I looked up each one of these bars, right now, CC's is open, in case anybody wants to go to happy hour. Pub 50 and Coco are also open. They're all... Well, CC's opens at 3:00, in case anybody wants to make that visit. But my point is that these clubs are already open. They're already working during the same hours that... School hours, that is. And so I believe that Ms. Madrid, and maybe she can respond to this, wants to do her alcohol in the evening after school has... And the after-school program has already ended. So do you have a problem with that, with those hours? Because they're not coinciding with school hours, so is that a problem for you, Rick?
So let me first start by saying, I'm not sure who was in the role that I sit in today when those requests came to the district. What I can tell you is that I've been in this role since 2020. And so long as I sit in this role, I will be here to speak against any establishment that's wanting to serve alcohol within the distance of the ordinance. Again, I think the council, whoever the council was in 2009, got it right. There was a reason why they put that in place, and I believe asking for a variance for that, it would not be prudent for me to not speak on behalf of our children, our parents, and our staff in their protection.
And the variance, you know, the applicable 300-foot minimum distance, we just saw from Kristin that it's actually 668. So it actually is double the length away. Is that not right, Kristin?
I don't believe that's correct. I think that used to be the variance. And then in 2009, the council changed it to the 300 feet. Am I...
But from door to door, from Kinsay's to... What is the distance once again?
So prior to 2009, when it was door-to-door for schools and daycares, yes, it would've been 668 feet. We would not be here today. So after 2009, it's property line to property line, which is 60 feet, the width of Avenue P.
Okay.
Ma'am, I'll just make one more comment.
Yes, please.
Because you did mention that they will be serving alcohol in the evening. We do have evening performances, evening PTA meetings, which usually once, sometimes twice a month. And so we would have parents and students there, including staff members, till probably about 7:00 or 7:30 after cleanup. And I have seen, you know, like you are stating, some of those other operations or establishments that are open. And a lot of those people that do park in that parking lot, when they have to exit, they do not just exit straight to 50th. Sometimes they exit coming to Avenue P, which is directly in front of Hodges Elementary. And I believe opening another establishment that sells alcohol would only increase the chances of some of our parents or students directly being involved in some type of dangerous accident.
Kristin, can you step back up to the mic, please?
Yes.
In reviewing some of the past, we had something similar like this on Milwaukee.
Mm-hmm.
Can you describe and tell a little bit more about that situation? Because I see a lot of parallels here, and I'm trying to be as objective for all parties involved, but I feel like there might be a little bit of an inequity.
Learning Tree Children's Academy is located at 7713 Milwaukee Avenue. And between 2015 and 2023, Council approved nine variances for businesses to have a TAVC license within 300 feet of that property.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alrighty. Any other questions? Mr. McBrayer?
Ms. Madrid, could you step forward again? So just to let us know, what will be the hours of operation of your business?
5:00 PM to 11:00 at night.
And what is the rated capacity for your...
Seventy-eight people.
Seventy-eight. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? And Dr. Wilson?
Ms. Madrid, will you come back up? I'm sorry. I was trying to catch you before you walked up. So currently, your restaurant is open?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you anticipate, like, a quadruple amount of traffic coming through if you were able to serve beer and wine and liquor in your store?
No, not a quadruple.
So you think the capacity and your customers are probably gonna remain the same that are already there to this day?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I've been around for all five of these.
We have seen Ms. Madrid.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Madrid. You know, we have a responsibility to protect our children at our elementaries. Their job is hard enough. I think the concentration is unfortunate of the alcohol establishments, but one thing that stands out to me, and serving on P&amp;Z before I got on this, when you have these types of conflicts, you really hope that the parties will work their issues out. And it concerns me that Ms. Madrid has not approached the district for some type of conversation about if there is any possibility for her to be able to operate her business. But at the same time, this was much more about... So much more than the name, and it's about safety, and there's a reason the ordinance is there. And so I will not support the application.
Ms. Sager, when you mentioned the ones on Milwaukee, the daycare, were there any objections from anyone on those cases?
The daycare owner did object to one. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then on the slide that you showed us, I believe all of the establishments that are already serving alcohol were prior to the 2009 ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I believe I already have my motion and second. I'll call for the vote. Those in favor of approving... I'll make sure we hear... Approving item 6.4, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, nay. Alrighty. It does not... It was 3 to 3, so it does not pass. It dies for lack of votes. Alrighty, let's move to item number 6.5, please. In reference to resolution, I'm gonna hand over the gavel to Mr. Massengill, so we can have a clean review of this case, or this item, should I say? Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Council, the next item for our consideration this afternoon is item 6.5. It's a resolution to consider creating a Citizens Committee to study amortization and strategic downzoning within the city of Lubbock. Mr. Atkinson, is there a staff presentation before we consider a motion on this one? Or negative, affirmative?
Affirmative.
Alright, I'll kick it to you, and then after that, we'll consider a motion.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council, if you would, the actual resolution for your consideration is on page 889 of your agenda packet. I'll go over a brief summary and then turn it over to our two council members who prepared and sponsored this resolution. In short, the attached resolution would create a Citizens Committee with three general kind of broad charges. The first charge is to study the concept of amortization as a tool that could then be possibly incorporated into the UDC. Please note that in that language, the committee charge does not include recommending or proposing the use of amortization for a particular business entity or similar. Rather, it is to study and possibly to recommend back the incorporation of amortization as a tool. Second charge is to assess the extent and the negative effect, if any, of abandoned industrial blight or underutilized properties on nearby residents. That's in the second paragraph of that resolution. That one is more broad. It is not looking for a particular tool rather than particular suggestion or comment. The third charge is related to strategic downzoning, excuse me, as a strategy or as a tool. Council, related to that and separate from this resolution, would make two points. One, it for the period of time in which the city's been engaged in preparing and now implementing the UDC. It has always been known that downzoning was something that needed to occur, and that that would likely be city-initiated in certain cases. So where we stand on that, and I speak now to you as staff representative rather than the particular resolution, staff is beginning the process of looking at vacant, not abandoned, but vacant M1, what were M1, M2 properties, that ultimately, if those are recommended for downzoning, they'll go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, ultimately up to the council, and so forth. The second item on the downzoning that is separate from this resolution, could be incorporated at the council's wish, is looking on a more comprehensive basis at properties that are not vacant, that are M1, M2. So this, in my mind, the most obvious example would be abandoned properties, or potentially properties that are utilized for something other than heavy industry, even though the base zone may be heavy industry. Council, to that end, in 2021, in our budget that year, so fiscal year '21, there were dollars set aside in a CIP, a capital improvement project, and that is out there today. Where staff stands on that is we have drafted the RFQ to help us get going on that. So those funds are available. They've not been expended, but plans are underway. So with that, Councilman Massengill, I'll turn it over to Ms. Patterson-Harris and Ms. Joy.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Atkinson. Before we start our discussion, Council, I'll require a motion and a second on this item.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Council, discussion or questions on this?
Mr....
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Massengill, thank you so much for recognizing me. Man, this has been a twist for me today, but nonetheless, I just thought it would be good or great practice to make sure that we're listening to citizens, at least to hear what they're having to say in trying to move on whatever that concern is. This type of item has been requested of us, or in some fashion, been in front of us several times since I've been on the council following 2019, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly. But I definitely believe, I've been doing a lot of driving around and noticing so many places that this study might help us to find answers for, not only within just the northern and eastern portions of the city, but in some of the other parts of the city as well. And I just think it would be good business for the city to take a look at this and include the citizens who themselves are also a part... Who are part of our community, to be the ones to move this down the road, or take a look at this and give us the answer. So thus, we have this item before us this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Joy?
When we were working on the UDC, we knew that when it was over, we would have some changes in zoning, particularly downzoning. And Ms. Patterson-Harris is correct. This is citywide. We're not singling out any part... One part of the city. And what we found in the course of going over zone cases, there's a lot of M1, M2 that is completely surrounded by commercial, not appropriate there. And so that's part of this second step of bringing those into the zone where they need to be located. Then when we got to the UDC and started talking about approving, that there was a discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission, lengthy discussion, about amortization. And here was the comment, "I don't know enough about it. I don't know what it is. I don't know how it applies. I need more information." Well, everybody was in a hurry to vote. There was even a suggestion by members of Planning and Zoning that a committee be appointed to study amortization. So this is a follow-up to the discussions that were had when we were talking about the UDC, the questions that had risen from Planning and Zoning, the reasons that they did not include was because they did not understand amortization. So rather than just play like we know what it is and how it applies, let's take a look at it. And it's proper for that to be one person from each district and one appointment by the mayor, with the chairman to be selected by the committee. And I think this just moves us along. It's a part of listening to citizens. Now, Mr. Schankels, that doesn't mean you get to have seven members who think it's great. That's not what this is about. This is about input from the entire city. So I think we need to get this done and move it on, and get moving on with the things we need to do as a result of the approval of... and get, moving on with the things we need to do as a result of the approval of the UDC and its amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. I have some mixed feelings on this subject, in part because we have gone through such a lengthy process in the UDC several years. And it's not that I'm against having a committee, but I think that we need to first, I mean, I think the timing isn't right. We decided or discussed that we would review items every six months. And so, that's one thing. And then, if we want to listen to the citizens, no doubt, that is why we are here. But, one of the discussions of the P&amp;Z is that the committee be appointed by the P&amp;Z. So, that was something else that I recall hearing from that conversation. For me, I think there's a lot of misinformation, and some of the folks that are, have driven this to council have also had misinformation and have attacked certain companies that do not deserve to be attacked. And I think that is probably the biggest issue that I have. There's, no doubt, there's some issues. But I think there's some concern, and we need to make sure that we are being mindful that some of the companies that are being attacked are bringing business into the neighborhood, jobs into the neighborhood. And really, it would be costly to move them out of the neighborhood. So, I don't believe that I can support this as of right now, but I would like to reconsider in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Mr. McBraer?
Yes, I understand everything that's been said today, but I do think it's of basic importance to us that citizens realize we listen to them. And when they bring their concerns to us and have consistently brought their concerns to us, regardless of what their concerns are, that we listen to what they say and we consider it, and if there's something that we need to do to gather more information, to look at an issue, then that's what we're here to do. So, I think this is a good resolution. I think we've come to the point now where it's appropriate for us to look at it. And this is just a study, and this is not just for one part of the city, as Ms. Joy has said, it's the whole city. But the voices we've heard have come from particular areas of our city, and so they deserve to be heard too on this issue. It's a study. It's nothing more than a study, but it's, for me, I need the information too. It's a very complicated issue, and it's not one that we will be adopting anyone's agenda and moving it forward. We're going to be studying it and looking at the right thing for the city of Lubbock and the citizens as we move it forward. So, I would be supportive of it.
Thank you, Mr. McBraer. Okay, I guess I'm sharing this item. I guess I get last word as... Oh, you're up. Dr. Wilson, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so, you know, I think amortization is a very slippery slope. And I, for one, am not in favor of communism in our country. And so, and I am not in favor ever of taking property owner rights away from them and small business owners' rights away from them. So, I will make my opinion very clear, that I will never, not today or ever, support any type of amortization in our city, because I will fully support our business owners and our property owners, 100%.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Okay, I think everyone's weighed in on this. I, I'm on the record several times, I have yet to see a good example where amortization has been productive in a community. And I, you know, probably will continue to be opposed to amortization if it's brought up. We've been talking about this for several months, even before this, this council was elected. This has been brought up by our citizens. I would not be supportive of anything that would create any type of additional regulation on our business community. Again, everyone knows where I stand on that, but at the same time, I am not opposed to having the conversation. And so, just as long as everyone understands how I feel about the policies being discussed, I'm supportive of the committee. Couple of things, I noticed that there's a specific, a date certain for this committee to deliver their results back. Mr. Atkinson, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. The final, final paragraph, paragraph number five, "The committee shall convene within two weeks." So, should this pass today at your next council meeting, November the 7th, each one of seven will be asked to make your appointment to the committee. Committee then will have its first meeting within two weeks, and then will report back to council not later than the second meeting in March 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Okay. Okay, counsel, any more discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate your vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign?
Nay.
What I do, count, that motion passes four to two. Mayor Protim, the gavel is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Massengill. You did a wonderful job. I'll make sure I give you a sticker on the way home, and I'll tell the mayor just how great you were today. Alrighty, I think we're down, heading down the homestretch. We have three items left. Is Mr. Joel Ivy gonna be providing? Oh, I was gonna say, otherwise you grew. I had Mr. Joel Ivy on the list to do this.
Joel can do this if he would like.
Oh, okay, no, 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 I'm good. I just had the wrong somebody.
That's fine.
Yeah, and I believe we're gonna be discussing some resolutions, and if you will, if it pleases the council for us to address all three of these items together. And I believe it's some great information as we head down the homestretch and get ready to hand that baton over to the next group, so...
Yes, ma'am, that is...
Give us what you've got today.
Alright, my name is Clint Gardner. I'm Chief Customer Officer for Lubbock Power and Light, and I am here today to discuss resolute, or agenda item 6.6, 6.7, and 6.8. So, we'll take all three of those together if that's what you so please.
Yes, sir.
Alright, 6.6 is referring to the polar process, which would be the provider of last resort. Should, once we enter into retail competition, should one of our reps, retail electric provider, I'll refer to them from now on as reps, if I may, if one of the reps defaults, then they will go to the polar process. If a rep is acquired by another rep, that will be a polar process. And then also, if a rep sells a block of customers to another retail electric provider, which is possible, then that would be a polar process as well. So, anyway, it could be. So, the mass transition has started, and we need to transfer those customers, and we need to do it as quickly as we possibly can. We want, what we're trying to do is maintain a continuity of service, so no one is without power. So, that's the whole purpose of that. Being an electric or a municipally-owned utility or an MOU, actually, we're the first one to opt-in, as y'all know, so there's some rules that weren't written. We actually fall, don't fall under chapter seven of the ERCOT Retail Market Guide, which refers to or deals with independently-owned utilities. So, we had to do chapter eight, which we wrote it, and we fall under that category. So, that's what we will be. And since there was a new section, nobody knew what was supposed to happen under there for the polar process or the retail, the rep, the default provider, or anything else. So, we wrote that, and we now fall under that. Now, let's see. With it not being ever a process set in place, what we've decided to do is follow what ERCOT has in place for all of their IOUs and retail electric providers. It's worked in the past. It works. It's really flawless for them. In fact, ERCOT told us there's really no other way to do it. So, we agree with it. It's a good process, and we will recommend that we continue to go with that process. Now then, and the last time it was used, I will say, was in Winter Storm Uri. So, it has been tested several times along the way, so it does work. Now, for the default retail electric provider, just to talk a little bit about it, we'll no longer serve our own customers, and so what we'll do is, two weeks prior to going live or going into the transition of retail competition, we're going to do a query, and we will bring out a list of every customer for the city of Lubbock that has not picked a retail electric provider. At that time, what we will do, there's three tell retail electric providers. As you know, it's Octopus, Relight, and TXU. Those are the three default electric providers. What we'll do is we'll just start printing the list by customer class, and then we'll start dividing them out just equally among the retailers. And it will be random, so it's not like we're going to be doing anything, putting people with different, specific reps. So, if multiple accounts, somebody has multiple accounts, we'll just group them together. So, that's the, that's the polar, that's the derel. Now, the only thing left is that, to see if we have enough providers in order to do, to transition into retail competition. I'm here and glad to say that as of the writing of these resolutions, and when the EUB passed it last week, we have 41 retail electric providers. Thirty-two of those are ready to go in day one. Nine will be coming in shortly thereafter. So, as far as other cities, Midland, Odessa, Wichita Falls, and Abilene, we're right in line with everything that they do. So, we, we wholeheartedly say that we do have enough retail electric providers to go into this. And this will fulfill, what was it, question seven on the original resolution. So, our recommendation is to pass all three.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna ask for a motion at this time, so we can entertain any type of questions or comments. Motion by Mr. McBraer, second by Ms. Joy. Alrighty, anyone with questions or comments? Ms. Joy? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
First of all, I just want to say you guys have done an amazing job. I feel like we're going to, knock on wood, do this very seamlessly, because you have really prepared. You've had a vision. You've followed the course. Even when we had a couple of hiccups, you've done everything right. So, I commend Joel and all of your staff, because you've done a wonderful job. And I know that we're now preparing for community meetings. I will be holding one on November the 13th. I'm very excited about that, because I think providing all of the information and tools necessary for the public to have to make these decisions and choices and understand is going to prevent scamming. It's going to prevent folks from not having electricity. There's a lot of positives. So, I want to thank y'all for all of your hard work and commitment to the citizens.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, Ms. Joy?
Yes, ma'am.
When we read these resolutions, we're up here going, okay, got it, got it. We've been sitting in meetings. We kind of know what you're talking about. On 6.6, if a customer does not select a provider, okay, then they will be assigned what's called a provider of last resort, right?
That would be a derel. If a customer does not, does not choose someone, would be a default retail electric provider.
Okay, I'm looking...
A polar process provider of last resort would be if a, an occurrence happened to where it's a mass transition to go to someone else. If someone defaults, if someone decides to leave our market, then they have to go to the, the polar process.
Okay, well, I, that's my point. I don't think it's perfectly clear for a, someone sitting at home trying to figure this deal out, okay? Because 6.7 talks about a default retail electric provider.
Correct.
And then you just use the same terminology for 6.6, saying, well, that's a default situation, so...
Well, 6.6 would be a provider of last resort.
I understand. That's the polar. And what is a, what is a polar?
A polar is provider of last resort. That is if a retailer during competition, already into it, and everybody has picked their provider, and we've done a derel, if that's what we had to do, then the, these are really kind of backwards. The polar is during retail competition.
That's what I thought.
Okay, the default rep will be at the point of choosing someone, at the point of transition.
So, we really should be looking at 6.7, and then we'd go to 6.8, if we're doing it in the sequencing of how this would occur.
Right.
Okay, alright, that helps. Thanks.
Good.
Thanks, Ms. Joy. Any other questions or comments? I just want to say before we go ahead and have our vote here, that this is exciting.
It is.
This is exciting stuff, especially for those of us who've been hanging around here for a minute or two. This is really exciting, and as Councilwoman Martinez-Garcia stated, that there'll be some community meetings coming. And just so those who are listening here today, to know, be prepared to put your, bring your umbrella and your, and your galoshes, so we can meet no matter what, so we can get this information out there to the citizens who are very concerned and who have been...
Yes, ma'am.
Waiting with bated breath, if I could say that.
We agree.
So, I appreciate you so much for this information. Any other comments, Mr. Atkinson, any comments or anything like that? Alrighty, well, go ahead and entertain a vote. Those who are in favor of passing items 6.6, 6.7, and 6.8, if you vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. We are adjourned for the day.